Councilmember Doug Young has our prayer pled to see.
Mr. Young.
Let us pray. Dear heaven father, thank you for the many blessings that you have given us. Lord, thank you in this same. We're blessed living in a free country where we can think and speak our minds. Give this council wisdom and leadership that its decisions may be fair to all. Lord, we ask you to protect our troops as they protect us. Be with our local heroes, our first responders who serve us all the time. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, April 21st, 2011. You have before you your consent agenda. If you have any questions regarding any of the items there, now would be a good time to bring those up. If not, I'll accept the motion that we accept our consent agenda as it has been presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Pass.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
You also have before you the minutes of a regular meeting held on April 7th, 2011. You've had an opportunity to review those minutes. Are there any corrections or deletions? If not, is there a motion? We accept those.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, please. Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone approximately 6.37 acres located in the Liberty Village PRD from a planned residential development PRD district to a single-family residential 15 RS-15 district and to amend the remaining Liberty Village PRD approximately 37.37 acres to exclude this area. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. At this time, we will consider recommendations of the Assistant City Attorney with regards to a request for a partial waiver of an navigation easement. Mr. Ives, welcome.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. Back in 1958, the city acquired an navigation easement over a tract of land. It's been sometimes referred to as the airport clear zone. The tract of land is to the south of the property that the airport actually owns, which is to the south end of the runway. This is an easement from the ground up and is intended to protect both residents and passengers. The city has the power to clear all the trees. We've never cleared them all, but we do trim the trees in that area. A house was constructed on a lot on the fronts on Herald Lane, and the back part of the property on that lot is within the navigation easement. The house was constructed clear of the easement, however, in about, the house was, in 1999, there was an addition built onto the house, and the addition extends into the navigation easement. Now, this is just into a city-owned easement. The property, the structure does not extend into what's called the Part 77 airspaces. These are the glide slopes and things of that nature that the FAA controls and that the city has to maintain strict observance of in order to acquire the federal and state grants that we acquire for the airport. The encroachment was discovered back in 2008 when Mr. Bellamy, the current owner, was attempting to sell his property. And because of the encroachment, he was unable to convey clear title. The encroachment is a master bedroom suite that is now a substantial portion of the house. And we have been endeavoring since that time to come up with a way that we could allow Mr. Bellamy to convey clear title of the house without tearing down, tearing off the addition. There was a proposal made by the Airport Commission a couple of years ago now, but the restrictions on that were such that Mr. Bellamy and his attorney felt that it wouldn't help him to convey clear title. What we have come up with is, I believe, something that will allow us to proceed with this without endangering the city. The city will actually get something, and yet let the city waive the easement, waive the encroachment to the extent that Mr. Bellamy can convey title. The conditions would be that there will be no other encroachments built into the easement, and that he will, in exchange for allowing the offending structure to remain in place, Mr. Bellamy will grant the city a permanent access easement over his driveway to get vehicles, including three trimming vehicles and other maintenance or service vehicles, into the clear zone or the navigation easement that the city controls. There are other ways to get in there, but they're difficult ways to get in there, and Mr. Bellamy's driveway is a perfect and easy place, and he has allowed us to do it in the past. But what he will do now is commit that, and commit for the future property owners that the city will have access over that driveway to the property. In addition to that, he's granting us an additional easement from the rooftop up on the front part of his lot. That way, if there are trees that should grow to the point of being offensive to the Part 77 airspaces, the city would have the right to go in and trim those trees. The Airport Commission did not recommend that this agreement be entered into. The Airport Commission was looking solely at the, as being stewards of city property and of the airport, and they felt that they ought not recommend letting go of an asset that the city had acquired in the past. Mr. Bellamy had asked to appeal that to City Council, and as a first step to that, we had the Planning Commission look at this, since it would be affecting city-owned property, it would go to the Planning Commission as a mandatory referral, so we took it there first. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this partial waiver. So we're here tonight asking council to consider it. Again, it's a difficult situation, and I think we've come up with something that is fair. There is, the risk to the city is that someday we may have to literally control that land from the ground up. And if we have to do that, then by allowing this structure to be, to remain in place, you know, we may have to pay some money for something that we really already own. Mr. Gerke, Airport Chair, Manager, and I, and others who have looked at this, we think that the likelihood of that is slim. There's this very small likelihood, but it is a possibility. But we feel with the benefit the city's going to get by having access, to good access to the property, that it's worth taking that chance. If you have any questions, Mr. Bellamy is here. If you have any questions that you might want to ask him. I would mention that the error was apparently on the part of the contractor. I think everybody that's looked at this is pretty satisfied that there was no ill intent on anyone's part. A lot of people have thought that the easement started, ran parallel with the fence that runs beside the property that the city owns, but in fact, the easement starts quite a few feet to the west of where that fence is. If you have any questions, be happy to answer. If not, if you so approve, we would, Mr. Bellamy has already signed this agreement, and if council approves, we'll have it executed by the mayor and recorded.
Any questions for Mr. Ives? As a member of the Airport Commission, I voted no, along with the other members of the commission. I wanted to go ahead and mention that I did, in fact, vote no to this agreement. And one of the other things that concerns me about that is that there are other structures along that street that are in the navigation easement, and I believe this would be, and the Airport Commission believed, I think, that this would be a bad precedent to set to leave the structure in. The other structures are primarily carports or outbuildings. They're not really attached to the homes other than what I would call temporary carports and that kind of thing, probably could be removed. I understand Mr. Bellamy's position, and I certainly would not want to be in that position, and I'm very sympathetic to it, but I will just vote no because that is exactly the way that our Airport Commission voted no. And I certainly don't recommend to the council any basis for them to vote yes or no because of that. I'm just going to tell you that that's why I'm going to vote no.
Mayor, respectfully, we, the Planning Commission, have looked at this for, what, two and a half years now, and this passed the Planning Commission unanimously with us thinking it was just absolutely the right thing to do, and I think it still is.
Mr. Ives, we've been working on this three years.
About that, yes.
And there's, it's a situation where everybody's in a little pickle, and as Mr. Gilly said, I think that the city's possibly giving up something, but the city is also gaining some opportunities for easement access and emergency access to this. We don't know what the Federal Aviation Commission's going to do down the road. We can guess, and we can guess right, and we can guess wrong, and they don't even know what we're going to do. But I think Mr. Gilly said it best that this is really the right thing to do, and is a motion in order?
It is.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
No. You have your waiver. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Director of Human Resources with regards to the city's health insurance benefits. Mr. Godwin, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bray, and members of the City Council. I'm pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the Human Resources Project Team to make a very important recommendation and proposal for your consideration. Prior to the meeting this evening, memorandum was prepared for your review with a summary of key items that have been documented as a result of our analysis and recommendations that have taken place over the course of the last six months. So I'd like to submit for your consideration those items and summarize those items at this time, and then answer questions as they might come up. Key to this recommendation is the fact that while there are several new vendors recommended, there are no significant changes in the level of employee benefits that are recommended that are currently being provided to the city's employees. We have detailed a summary of the competitive process that was begun, again, back in the fall of last year, which included a number of requests for proposals and invitations to bid, and so those data points are available for you to review. The city of Murfreesboro is not unlike a number of other cities, municipalities, and organizations in the nation with escalating healthcare costs and trends of claims increases. Essentially, we are forecasting and projecting that those claims dollars will remain at approximately one-tenth of the city's entire budget, eclipsing $10 million in claim dollars for the coming fiscal year. And because most of the city's health insurance benefits and programs have not been competitively bid in a number of years, we launched this project back in the fall of last year. You might recall with the approval of the City Council, Sherrill Morgan, which is a consulting firm specializing in benefits consulting to the public sector, was contracted with as we began this process. In attendance this evening is one of our guests is Mr. Mark Morgan, who's President of Sherrill Morgan. I'll ask Mr. Morgan to stand. Thanks for being here.
Welcome, Mr. Morgan.
As a result of the work with this project committee and Sherrill Morgan, the city essentially decided to conduct the in-depth analysis, which included a number of proposals, preliminary and finalist interviews, site visits, and results from an actuarial study that were provided by Sherrill Morgan in order to bring the recommendations to you here this evening. I would also point out that on the Human Resources Project Team, Jim Crumley, Assistant City Manager, participated, as well as a number of my staff, Ms. Pam Russell, Assistant Human Resources Director, who's here this evening, as well as Chris McFarlane and Karen Heiduk, both Human Resources Assistants. The unification of healthcare provider and plan design in the summary section is the news, really, that I think that a number of people have been waiting to hear about this year. Twelve firms proposed their services, and as a result of those proposals, the city is recommending Healthscope benefits as our choice to provide the health benefit administration to our employees. In addition to the health insurance proposal for our active employees and our, what we call our pre-65 employees, Healthscope is also recommended as the post-65 retiree healthcare provider with a Medicare supplemental benefit. Healthscope will also provide, as in our recommendation, a flexible spending account as our benefits administrator for that benefit as well. So there are three, if you will, separate benefits that Healthscope is being suggested to provide. To our promise, we have made a recommendation, and do so here tonight, that employees will have a choice of electing a PPO-style plan that is similar to the former Blue Cross/Blue Shield Network Plan, and they will also have the choice of electing an EPO-style plan, which is similar to the United Healthcare Plan that currently exists. And by the way, those two providers will still be providing coverage levels up until July 1st, and there is also a period of time after July 1st for claims that were begun prior to that period of time that will be, if you will, taken care of by those two current providers. Our recommendation tonight is that the funding level for the premiums continues to be shared at an 80%, 20% share level. That is, the city would continue to pay 80% of the total costs associated with healthcare premiums, and that the employees would pay a 20% share level. For your reference and information, we've included a chart, including the recommendations for the increase or the variances in both the city and the employees' share for the new fiscal year, as well as the total variance. So for example, a family health insurance contract that is currently contracted with the United Healthcare, the employee would see a variance of $13.88 more per month under this current proposal and recommendation. That's approximately 6% more. I would point out in addition that there is a plan year deductible suggestion or proposal, and that is that the current plan year deductible continue on the same cycle, which is a calendar year. And the discussions with Healthscope are that they will continue to credit employees who have already paid their deductible for the current calendar year, so employees will not have to meet a new deductible. The details of those deductibles are identical to the former Blue Cross and UHC plans at 250 and 500 for individual and family, and 500 and $1,000 for family coverage respectively. And by the way, there is no plan year deductible proposal change for Delta Dental. That remains the same. For the dental insurance provider, 15 firms proposed their services. Delta Dental of Tennessee is once again the recommended as the city's provider for dental coverage. Delta Dental has maintained a contract with the city for a number of years and has agreed in the discussions to provide a level of service that we find acceptable. In addition, there will be a new component that is being proposed as an option only for employees. It is called prepaid dental, and that is an option that is being administered by Assurant Employee Benefits. A prepaid dental option works like an HMO plan whereby an employee would pay a much lower or reduced premium without any copays or deductibles other than the point of sale. In other words, the employee would pay a negotiated rate for service at the provider's office. So there are no claim forms to file. There essentially are no administrative correspondence back and forth between the provider and the city. The employee would pay, if you will, again, a very much discounted rate. Those services are also discounted inside of the network with Assurant. But let me reemphasize, that is an option for employees. If they wish to continue with their Delta Dental coverage, they may do so as is. Those rates are also recommended in that summary section, including the total variance for the new fiscal year. To continue, the Employee Assistance Program information, 12 firms also proposed services for that benefit this year. Life Services, EAP, of Nashville, Tennessee, is recommended as a new Employee Assistance Program provider. Life Services currently has an office location in Murfreesboro on Heritage Park, and they're fully staffed and prepared to assist the city of Murfreesboro employees. We expect Life Services will provide the city with a very robust set of reporting tools and information that will be helpful to manage our employees' self-referrals and mandatory referrals.
Who was our previous supplier there?
Mayor Bray, the Guidance Center was the former EAP provider. As mentioned earlier, Healthscope would also provide the service for the flexible spending accounts to city employees. We will mention that the current plan year for the medical reimbursement accounts ends on June 30th, and our proposal tonight is that there be a short plan year for the medical reimbursement accounts, which would essentially mean that employees have to forecast their spending for a short or six-month period. And beginning of January 2012, they will once again be estimating those amounts for a full plan year. Stop-loss reinsurance was bid this week, and that's a very important component of our recommendations. At this time, since it has just been bid, there is no formal recommendation tonight, but you will see the dates associated with that bid. We do expect that on June 9th, that final contracts will be presented to mayor and city The reason for the stop-loss bid in connection to tonight's meeting and the dates that you see is the ability for the city to maximize or optimize the quotes with respect to the claims data. So the quoting timetable is close to the effective date of July 1st as possible is optimal for the city. Moving on with the life, LTD, accidental death, and dismemberment insurance, 13 firms bid their services to the city. If you're keeping count of the number of firms that submitted bids, a total of 52 firms submitted their bids and proposals to the city throughout all these contracts. With respect to the life coverage, Securing Financial Services, which is a division of the Minnesota Insurance Company, is the low bidder with respect to the group life, AD&amp;D. And the Standard Insurance Company is the low bidder with respect to the long-term disability New this year, for the very first time, the successful bidder, Securing Financial Services Group, will be providing as an option to employees a voluntary life and AD&amp;D coverage, and this will enable employees to choose voluntary life coverage or a term policy at very affordable group rates. And these rates, of course, will be based on the age of the employee, but we're very excited about the opportunity to offer our employees a new benefit in the course of all of these proposals and recommendations. The remainder of the report tonight to you, mayor and city council, deals with the cost increases and the funding that's been recommended, and we asked Sherrill Morgan to assist us in making those decisions and reviews with respect to both of our fixed costs and our variable costs in terms of our claim dollars. As you know, the city is self-funded in our insurance program. And as a result of that analysis, we made some assumptions and essentially reviewed Sherrill Morgan's recommendations based on the potential claims dollars that will be incurred. Once again, we are projecting that proposed funding should be at $10,382,703.98. That proposal is higher than last year's proposal by approximately $680,000 based on claims history, based on current employee enrollment levels as of March 31, 2011, further based on the administrative costs that will be incurred with using Healthscope benefits as our provider, and also an estimating stop-loss increase being flat. In the expenditure summary section of the report, you'll see that we have detailed information there for your review as a comparison between the current fiscal year and next fiscal year. Finally, our post-65 age retirees will be, as we mentioned just a minute ago, offered a very similar opportunity with respect to what they're receiving now, and that is to have coverage with a Medicare supplement, with Medicare being the primary carrier for those coverages. And you'll see a summary in that table with respect to those costs and the variance that's being proposed. With this amount of change comes an enormous amount of work and communication, and my staff is making plans, this week actually, to conduct a series of meetings. Right now, we're planning 18 employee meetings. We may have more, and we're going to try to cover all shifts. We're going to try to cover as many areas of the city as we can. We're considering this year to be a positive enrollment, and that will mean that every city employee has to be contacted and has to be given the information because we want them to be very clear about what their choices are, and we have frankly a very good message to send to them. The other option that we're looking toward in terms of communication is to conduct a series of webinars that will include employees and their spouses being invited to participate on question and answers, because if a lot of employees are like me, their spouse at home usually knows more about their benefits. But in this case, that isn't true. So we are inviting spouses, of course, to participate in those series of webinars to make sure that they have their questions answered. Healthscope benefits, I'd like to introduce as our guest tonight, Mr. Kevin Ryan, who is Vice President of Sales. Kevin, if you'd please stand. It's good to have you here. Kevin and his team will be assisting the city in what's called an implementation meeting and a communication plan that will include a toll-free, city of Murfreesboro-only number for employees and their spouses to call and ask questions. And Kevin and his team are already making plans to assist the city in terms of making sure that employees understand the two major questions that normally come in benefits changes. Is my doctor covered, and can I go to the pharmacy that I used to go to? And we are very pleased with the amount of responsiveness, even to this day, with the information that Kevin and his team have provided us. I will mention that that information is available online, and the Cigna Great West Network is the current network that our employees will be participating in, and that is facilitated by Healthscope benefits. Your approval tonight of these recommendations is requested respectfully. We believe that the recommendations are appropriate while the final contract details are being resolved by our consultants and by our legal staff. We need your approval tonight to move forward to achieve the goal of a July 1 implementation date, as we have a very aggressive schedule in place for implementation planning and communication planning during open enrollment. At this point in time, we do plan to launch our open enrollment meetings on May 10th. Thank you for your consideration of these recommendations and proposals, and I'll be glad to answer questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Godwin?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Young.
How long will your enrollment window be?
Two weeks is our plan right now.
All right, and I have had some questions, as you very well pointed out. Will certain people be able to continue with certain doctors and the pharmacy? So you've read their minds well, but I can't answer that question, and you probably can't either right at this moment, but it is a legitimate, very legitimate concern, especially of some specialized... But it is a legitimate, very legitimate concern, especially if some specialized doctors need to be included in this.
Yes, sir, it is. And I know that the information is available readily, and I know Mr. Ryan and his team are ready to also answer questions about specific or unusual circumstances with specialty physicians.
Mr. Gilly?
Glenn, you and I talked at length about the changes this morning, and I believe the figures you shared with me as to doctor matchup from current plans to this is probably the 98% to 99% mark, and pretty close to that for pharmaceutical as well. And I did pull up the two websites that you gave me and spot-checked doctors in the Murfreesboro Nashville area from various specialty. And I've yet to find a Murfreesboro doctor that was not, that a spot check that wasn't on the list.
Thank you. Yes, we expect about a 98% to 99% match. And going through this process, that's referred to as a disruption report, but it's very close to being identical. I will point out that the formularies or the drugs that are currently prescribed in the two different networks will be the same.
And another thing that you and I talked about this morning that I think actually is a positive, at least for those of us who have been on the Blue Cross Plan when it comes to the prescription drug procedure, as most of you know, the procedure as it is now, if you're on the Blue Cross Plan, the employee fronts the money 100% and then waits several weeks to get a refund from Blue Cross once they've met the deductible. And what I understand you're telling me is that under this plan, even under the PPO plan, the savings will be realized at point of sale as opposed to waiting for a refund? Is that correct?
That is correct. Of course, some final details with our PBM are being negotiated right now, but we do have initial information that the data feed information from Healthscope to the PBM will be done on a daily basis, which allows that scenario to take place. So the employee will not have to be reimbursed, if you will, in front of the money for a prescription. And certainly, that's a structural or procedural design with the current provider and their pharmacy benefits manager.
And one last thing, employees I know are going to ask oftentimes, you know, when you shift from one carrier or another, and I realize we're using a TPA because we're self-funded, nonetheless, questions are employees that have pre-existing conditions, that sort of thing. They're being, transfers over just as they are covered right now. It's not like you're leaving the city and then having to requalify with another carrier. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Other questions for Mr. Godwin? Mr. McFarland?
Mr. Godwin, it looks like based upon the previous three years that our increase is in range, or a little less than where we've been over the last, especially like last year and the year before, because I think we were 20 or some odd percent, if I remember. So, I mean, we're looking, say, for a family who's going to be on the PPO plan, it's a 9% increase, which seems what the market is doing in healthcare.
Yes, and certainly, there are some trends and indications that even five years ago, employees and organizations are paying between 30% and 40% more than they were five years ago. But we were able to make this proposal based on a couple of important factors. One is the real reduction, which we really sought in being very competitive about this process and the administrative fees. So we feel that we're able to pass that on, if you will, in terms of real savings to the city and its employees. But the claims dollars trend, as you point out, is increasing, and our ability to try to affect that is going to be a project for us in the next several years. It's clear to us that that is a yearly evaluation.
And I think part of that, we've talked about, you know, with us initiating our health initiative with our employees, but there's several, I think, other areas that we also can look at, even with retirees. And I think even that we talked about in Parks and Recreation, maybe looking at a way that, you know, you look, we're paying $946 a month or propose for a family, that there's a way that we can get families involved with the city, because the healthier the family is or the individuals, it saves the city money, plus better off for the family as well. So that may be something we can talk about when budget comes up.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I note that this is the first time you believe that the city has conducted a request or proposal bid of all its insurance contracts. Is that correct?
Yeah. It's been, at the same time, yes, this has been some time since this has been put out on the street, and I want to commend Mr. Godwin, Ms. Russell, the HR Department, Mr. Crumley, Ms. McGannon, Ms. Wright, everyone worked very, very hard on this. There's been a ton of work. Mr. Morgan's firm has been a great help, and this was a tremendous undertaking, and we're very appreciative of all their hard work.
Especially the work that they're doing on this in addition to what they already do every day. So, as sometimes I say, we're probably overpaid for what we got hired to do and a lot underpaid for what we end up doing. So, my congratulations to you, and I appreciate all the efforts of everyone in putting that together. Any other questions or comments? These proposals are for a three-year contract. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is it a one-year renewable, or is it three years?
At this point in time, it's three years.
Are there any questions? Any additional questions? Are you ready for a motion?
Glenn, just out of curiosity, if an employee asks, have we stayed with the other two, the amount of increase of premiums for both the city and the employee? Do you have at least a guesstimate as to how that would come in line, the difference?
It's extremely difficult to guess because we, of course, wouldn't know what the true administrative fees were from our current carriers. But last year, for example, we were met with approximately 13% and 16% funding request increases and 2% and 4% administrative increases.
So 15% to 18% as opposed to going up in this situation, what percent again on the nine?
On the administrative fees? About 2% and 3% administrative and between 12% to 16% on the claims dollars funding.
When we look at our health administration fees, that fixed piece for processing the claims, it'll be $219,000 less this year.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
I know it's a lot of information. I'd hate for Mr. Godwin's recommendation to die for lack of emotion.
Mayor, if there are no questions, I will move for approval of the recommendation.
Second. All right, you have a motion, second.
And just for clarification, that would be to approve the selection of the proposers, the award of the bids, and authorizing the mayor to execute the documents as outlined in the memo?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You go with that tissue.
Absolutely. That's exactly what I was thinking.
Anything else, Ms. McGannon?
No, sir. Thank you, sir.
Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Godwin. Thank all your team for us, please, and Mr. Lyons, thank you and your staff. Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from the city manager, Mr. Lyons, with regards to dates for budget review and public hearing.
Mayor, insurance isn't the only thing we've been working on. We are hard at work at the budget as well. We will have that to you by the date required of May the 15th, but did want to outline a roadmap for our budget review sessions so that we can get those advertised and publicized. Ms. Smith has contacted you. It appears that the dates of May 16th, May 25th, and May 26th are currently all available. In the past, we've started our budget review sessions at 4:00 PM. And then finally, I also propose that we would have our budget public hearing at your June 9 council meeting. So those would be the three budget review sessions, the 16th, 25th, and 26th, with public hearing on June 9.
All right, council.
4:00 PM.
4:00 PM.
Rob, I know the deadline is May 15th, but usually we have more than one day before we see the big box, before the first date's May the 16th.
I think it's, 14th is a Friday, I think, so you'll get it that, hopefully.
So you're going to give us at least a weekend.
Yeah, you'll get it.
At 4:00 PM, yes.
20th?
Yeah, 13th is the Friday.
Friday the 13th, and so, okay. That's just what I'm, Friday the 13th, and when you back the armored car up to my office store with all those banker's boxes.
All right. So you have a recommendation of May 16th, May 25th, and May 26th at 4:00 PM for, if necessary, for all our budget to review, and then have a public hearing on June the 9th.
That would be at your regular council meeting.
At the regular council meeting.
So we get it to review on the 13th, you say?
Yes, ma'am. If not sooner.
Not to put any pressure on you, but the sooner, the better, if you could. We know you're working around the clock on this, but...
Yes, sir.
I guess the good thing, you know, our meeting that we have on the 16th is pretty specific on what we're going to be discussing that day, so that...
That's true.
...mean that we don't have to go over the whole budget. We can just prepare for that.
It's usually the outside agencies as well.
You'll have outside agencies and then a handful of city departments, and that list will be publicized ahead of time.
We'll have that, like Mr. Vaughn was saying, to focus in on which sections to be looking at for that meeting.
Yes?
So I move that we accept the city manager's second request.
All right. The 16th, the 25th, the 26th, and also to have a public hearing on June the 9th. Is there a motion? You had the motion, Mr. McFarland, who was the second. Mr. Young, second.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. So you have a motion and second. Are there any questions regarding the motion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider a request to reject all bids and rebid the Energy Efficient Schools Initiative Phase II renovations for Murfreesboro City Schools.
Mayor McGannon? I would handle that to Mr. Lynch and Mr. Anderson. The bids came back more than the grant. They want to reject all bids and rebid, changing the contract so that the HVAC work, the upgrades which had been included with the electrical lighting upgrades, would be split. And the request is for authority to reject the bids and rebid.
All right. Any questions regarding this request?
So moved.
You have a motion? There's a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions on the motion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. All right. This time, we'll review any beer permit requests or applications. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, I have three tonight, and they're all very different, so if you don't mind, we'll just take them one at a time. The first one is the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce. They've listed several special events, including their opening on May 3rd. The rest are for the Chamber of Networking events, and the locations vary, as do the dates. They're on the attached sheet.
All right. You have these beer permit applications for the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce. Is there a motion that we accept those?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
The next one is an application y'all approved in March when the applicant went to the ABC to get his liquor permit. He ended up having the form filled out differently. He needed to change his ownership name and the DBA name with us to match both his business licenses done at the state and the liquor permit done at the state. He's the sole owner of the business. But on the ABC form, they somehow left off the word barbecue, and so he wants to leave it off here. And Keep It Simple Food Group is the name of his LLC, of which he's the 100% owner. So I'm asking permission to get his beer permit reissued in the name that would match both his business license and his liquor permit.
All right. Any questions, Ms. Wright? You have this application before you.
Will it be approved?
Second. All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider a request to reject all bids and rebid the Energy Efficient Schools Initiative Phase II renovations for Murfreesboro City Schools.
Mayor McGannon? I would handle that to Mr. Lynch and Mr. Anderson. The bids came back more than the grant. They want to reject all bids and rebid, changing the contract so that the HVAC work, the upgrades which had been included with the electrical lighting upgrades, would be split. And the request is for authority to reject the bids and rebid.
All right. Any questions regarding this request?
So moved.
You have a motion? There's a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions on the motion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. All right. You have these beer permit applications for the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce. Is there a motion that we accept those?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
The next one is an application y'all approved in March when the applicant went to the ABC to get his liquor permit. He ended up having the form filled out differently. He needed to change his ownership name and the DBA name with us to match both his business licenses done at the state and the liquor permit done at the state. He's the sole owner of the business. But on the ABC form, they somehow left off the word barbecue, and so he wants to leave it off here. And Keep It Simple Food Group is the name of his LLC, of which he's the 100% owner. So I'm asking permission to get his beer permit reissued in the name that would match both his business license and his liquor permit.
All right. Any questions, Ms. Wright? You have this application before you.
Will it be approved?
Second. All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
The next one is a new club restaurant on 302 West Main Street. It has not, I have not received the final building codes inspections. My understanding is I will get that form in the morning. There was one last inspection that was very minor on a sign that needed to be done. This location has had alcohol there before, but this is a different business, new owner, new name.
All right. Is applicant here? Mr. McGill?
Yes, sir.
I think I've met you before.
Yes, sir, you have.
And I believe it might have been at the tornado or right after the aftermath, and you had a pretty rough time of that. Certainly, we're all very sympathetic, but we know that in rebuilding, you did an excellent job of putting Riverstone Tavern back together, and we appreciate that. I think that there may be some questions because of some downtown merchants who've had contact with us regarding, and if you would step to the microphone, and I appreciate
Mayor?
Yeah.
I've had, Ms. McGill, I have had an inquiry about a dumpster or your daily trash removal.
My daily trash removal, we picked up by myself and my staff in a trailer, taken to our dumpster at Riverstone, put into the dumpster there. We have scheduled pickups. We've already added pickups to carry any excess and overflow we may have.
You don't really have room for a dumpster site.
No, sir.
Because you have no back alley type.
I don't even have a back alley. I have nothing.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
That was a question that I had that I wanted to ask you personally.
Understandable. Yes, sir.
Mr. McFarland?
Mr. Lyons and Mr. McGill, thank you for being here. And we, I have a downtown business also, and so I know we are all very cognizant of what that brings, as far as not your business, but what the downtown community means to Murfreesboro. I've had several people who had called me about this, not necessarily the, what you're bringing there, but the question is, we have to go by a past track record. What, do we have a record of how many calls that we have had to the Riverside Saloon, and if that's something that, as a mayor, had talked about that we're going to be dealing with downtown as well?
I don't have that information this evening, Mr. McFarland. I know, you know, what Ms. Wright has provided to you is the information we provided for all the beer permits. I know there's some general city code language dealing with, you know, how an establishment's to be managed. Mr. McGill has told us this evening that he's going to manage his patrons. He's going to manage trash around the site. He is going to be a good contributor to the downtown, and that's what we expect. We do wish him all the success. Anything short of that, and we will have a conversation.
The only thing I would add is we, in, we don't, any downtown business, it's a very different climate than having a standalone business that you don't have necessarily neighbors that are right next to you. So with that comes a responsibility that you've talked about maintaining, so that's something that we all have to make sure and watch out for.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. Good luck. All right. Is there a motion that we accept this beer permit application?
It meets our requirements. I move it be approved. Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?